We'll call a regular meeting in New Ulm City Council for Tuesday, November 3rd at 4:30 PM. The order. First item on the agenda is a public notice to conduct meeting by town conference, but we do have the quorum here, so we won't need to do that. So we'll go on to item number two, consent agenda items.
I'll offer a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Any more discussion on them?
Just a quick comment and a congratulations to our fire department folks, First Assistant Chief Aaron Wilford, Second Assistant Chief Melissa Visser, and our Fire Marshal Trent Zabel.
Thank you. Any other? See none? On favor say aye.
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 Close, no. Motion carries. Item number 3.1, public hearing on the reassessments of the unpaid 2005 Lakeside Village and the 2007 Dakota West addition special assessments. Joe?
All right. Thank you, Mr. President, city councilors. The item before you today is to reassess the unpaid balance of the 2005 Lakeside Village, 2007 Dakota West special assessments. These are properties that went into tax forfeiture prior to the assessments being paid at both subdivision locations. So this is just a process that we go through to properly reassess those amounts back to the parcels.
All right.
There's nine parcels in Lakeside Village and one in Dakota West.
All right. This is a public hearing. Anybody like to be heard on those?
What?
Step up to the mic. Name and address for the record, please.
Michael Beavens. I live at 33 Village Lane, and I'm just wondering how that's going to affect, I just bought a house out there, how that's going to affect our pre-assessment of what we purchased our house for and the assessments that we're putting in there, how much it's going to affect us at all with that dollar amount if it's changing or what's going to happen with that?
Can I answer that one, Joe?
The assessment amounts will remain the same amount that they were previously. Nothing's changed in the amounts from the assessments. So it would, it's either, for Lakeside Village, it's either that 8,300 or 9,700. I just have the legal description, so I don't have the exact address listed.
Okay. Answer your question?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Anybody? See none? Entertaining motion?
Offer the resolution, waive the reading, closing the public hearing, and adopting the final assessment rules for the 2005 Lakeside Village and 2007 Dakota West additions payable over 10-year period along with a 5.5 simple interest charge on the unpaid balance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to offer the resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Councillor Matt?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 4.1, raffle gambling permit for the New Ulm Area Catholic Schools, and that's for Friday, January 22nd, 2021.
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? On favor say aye.
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 Close, no. Motion carries. Item 5.1, conditional use permit for Jill Peterson. Go ahead, Dave.
Okay. The proposed location is 29 Circuit Drive. That location is east Summit Avenue and north of 10th South Street. Home occupations are permitted in residential zoning districts with a conditional use permit. Since 1977, we have approved 15 hair salons in residential locations in the community. We've also approved other similar types of uses where customers have to go to a residential location to receive a service. We identified four conditions for this request. Those are hours of operation will generally be between 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM, and no activity will take place after 9:00.
Goodbye.
The applicant will pay the cost to record the permit with the Brown County Recorder's Office. Third, the applicant will secure and maintain any necessary licensing from appropriate governmental units for the practice of cosmetology and operation of a hair salon. And then four, customer parking will take place on a hard surface location on the applicant's property. Should note that the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the request at their meeting.
And no concerns from neighbors or?
We did have, if you note in the staff report, there was one neighbor expressed some concern about our children in the neighborhood and how does the traffic impact that. And then apparently there are other beauticians that live in that area, and there was a concern that if they also wanted to open up home occupations in their units, might that be too much?
Thank you, Dave. Any other questions for Dave?
I think Dave pretty much covered it from the Planning Commission's recommendation here, so I'm going to offer the resolution, waive the reading, and approval of the application of Jill Peterson requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operational hair salon as a home occupation in R1, single-family residence zoning district on the property located at 29 Circuit Drive and legally described as Lot 6, Block 2 cells addition.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to offer the resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? See none? Go ahead.
That's with the four conditions.
With, with the four.
With the conditions.
Thank you.
All right. And any questions, concerns? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Councillor Matt?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian? Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 5.2, M&amp;D Properties LLC variance request. Don?
Good evening. This request is being made by M&amp;D Properties for the purpose of constructing two new storage condominiums. Each storage unit in one of these condominiums will be on its own separate lot. So of the two new storage condominiums, you'll have 14 separate lots with 14 units. Lot 15 will be for an existing storage unit already on the property, and then Lot 16 will be the open area around these storage units that'll be maintained by the owners of units 1 through 15. So because of the way this is being constructed, there are a number of variances being requested for front yard variances, rear and side yard variances, lot area requirement variance, lot coverage requirement variance, lot frontage requirement variance would all be necessary for these to be constructed in this manner. There was a public hearing at the Planning Commission, and there were no comments made at that time. The Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval with one condition at its October 29th, sorry, not with one condition, with four conditions at its October 29th, 2020 meeting. And I'd like to read those conditions for the record. One would be there should, there should be a common party firewall up to new construction standards found in the Minnesota State Building Code, constructing along the common wall of each unit. Two, the applicant will record all required agreements, easements, and deed restrictions on all structures that abut the zero side lot line. Three, the property and structures will comply with all other, all other relevant zoning district regulations. Four, the city attorney will review and approve the community slash property owner's agreement to ensure that there are sufficient access provisions and that the access provisions cannot be changed without city consent.
Thank you, John. Anybody have any questions for John?
I'm going to just add from the Planning Commission, you know, this, we understood everything, and it was just like the preliminary plot and what we had been working on for the past couple of months, so.
I think we do have actually one similar in that area also.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Okay. With that, I'll approve with the four conditions, the application of M&amp;D Properties LLC requesting a variance to reduce the front yard, rear, and side yard setbacks, lot area requirements, lot coverage requirements, and a lot frontage requirements for the construction of two storage building condominiums.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? On favor say aye.
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 Close, no. Motion carries. Item 5.3, Rodney and Bonnie Repke variance request.
Okay. So for a little background, this property is located at the intersection of South Payne Street and Hounstein Drive. The property owners are requesting a variance to place or to add to an existing garage. And I want to make one correction to the proposed actions, to be 17 feet from the front yard property line. So they're building 13 feet into the 30-foot setback, okay?
Okay.
And it should be noted that only the northeast corner of their proposed garage would be in that setback area. The setback area along Hounstein Drive will be, continue to be maintained. The Planning Commission heard this at their October 29th, 2020 meeting and unanimously recommended approval with one condition. There were no comments from the public on this matter. The one recommended condition would be that the applicant shall locate the property boundaries and verify the location of the proposed building on the site with city staff prior to the placement of the building.
I'll go ahead and offer the motion with the one condition listed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I'm going to just state, you know, this is a unique property. If you look at your packet, you know, because you've got two front yard setbacks on this.
Actually, I was going to ask, is it technically three front yard setbacks?
Technically it is, yeah.
That's very unique.
It's a very unusual shaped lot. Could I make just one note for the record? If we wouldn't mind just reading the motion out loud to include a 17, to build 17 feet from the front property line rather than 13.
That's fine.
Yep.
You want it read? Go ahead, Les.
Yeah, I'm adding that.
That works.
Okay. Thank you, John. Any more discussion? See none? On favor say aye.
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 Close, no. Motion carries. Thank you, John. Rezoning the property located at 1601 and 1620, or to 1627 South German Street. Dave?
Okay. In order to rezone a parcel of property, the council needs to determine that one of two conditions is present, and that is either that the proposed rezoning corrects an error in the original zoning text or map, or that the proposed rezoning addresses a need arising from a changing condition trend or fact affecting the subject property and surrounding area. And so in this particular case, the staff recommendation and the Planning Commission's concurrence was that there are changing conditions, trends, or facts with regards to this half block of property. One of the major ones being that while the property is zoned for multifamily, in our zoning ordinance, on our comprehensive plan, it is intended to be industrial. I would also note that a changing condition is the fact that we have two majors, not major streets, but a collector and a, maybe a minor arterial street that kind of separate this property from the other multifamily zoned areas. If the council proceeds with the rezoning, I would, something that's missing from the report is that you should direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for that purpose.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody have any questions, concerns for Dave?
Just the consensus from the Planning Commission, this would just help clean up this part of town for, you know, purposes.
And one other comment, I know our Community Development Director, it's been talked about for years with our comp plan to get this property rezoned to that. So with that, I'll approve the petition of Bev Lunenberg, General Manager of Lunenberg Enterprises LLC to rezone from R3 to I2. The property legally described as lots 8 through 14, Block 42, South of Center Street for the reasons identified in Section C of the staff report dated October 23rd, 2020, and also that city attorney prepare the change in the ordinance.
Second.
One condition? No?
No, I didn't see any condition.
Okay, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? On favor say aye.
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 Close, no. Motion carries. Item 5.5, conditional use permit for Tony Rush on behalf of the New Ulm Youth Wrestling Association.
Okay, so the street address for this particular request is 1601 to 1615 South German Street. So this is four lots out of the seven lots that you just authorized the rezoning of. And so this would be located in the corner of this particular parcel near 16th South and German Street at that intersection. And the association is proposing to construct a building of approximately 5,000 square feet, and within that building, they would use it for youth wrestling activities. That type of facility isn't a permitted use in the I2 zone, but is allowed with a conditional use permit. Other groups have received conditional use permits to operate similar type of facilities in industrial zoning districts, and the staff report to the Planning Commission lists five different groups that have, you know, been allowed to locate in industrial zone with conditional use permit. Staff, you know, recommended approval as did the commission. The conditions, there were three. One is that the applicant's property owner will pay the cost to record the permit with the Brown County Recorder's Office. Two, that the applicant property owner and any users of the property will not use the alley right of way for parking purposes, since that's also the location of our bike trail. And then I'd like to add a third, and that is that the permit is contingent on the rezoning of the property to I2. That would conclude the staff report.
Thank you, Dave.
As far as from the Planning Commission, you know, we've got a similar activity going on just across the alley with the Soft Baseball Association has going on and so.
And I believe we also gave them to the New Ulm Girls Fast Pitch down on Valley Street, real identical conditions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
So, I'm going to offer the resolution, waive the reading, approval of the applicant of Tony Rush on behalf of New Ulm Youth Wrestling Association and Bev Lunenberg as property owner for a conditional use permit to allow local youth wrestling organization to occupy and use a new building for youth wrestling activities in an I2 general industrial zoning district on property legally described as lots 11 through 14, Block 42, South of Center Street.
With three conditions.
With the conditions.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 6.1, City Engineer Office of, Offer of Employment.
Thank you, President and councilors. I am here today to recommend that the council appoint interim city engineer Joe Stadheim to the position of city engineer effective November 4th, 2020. Joe has been the interim city engineer since May 31st, and also the assistant city engineer for the city since January 2nd, 2007. The recommend, recommendation further includes no additional probationary period, as he has been doing the job of interim city engineer since May 31st, 2020, and then also compensation at the third step rate.
Thank you.
Counselors, it'd be my pleasure to approve the appointment of Joe Stadheim to the position of city engineer effective November 4th, 2020.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Would you like to say anything, Joe?
Let's make, yeah, let's make him talk, yeah.
I mean, you got all dressed up for this tonight. We're going to put you up there.
I can at least get some screen time, I guess. But councilors, thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm very excited to serve the citizens of New Ulm in a, in a different role. I've been here since January 2nd of 2007. I'm very happy to be here, and again, thank you for the opportunity.
Glad to have you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Shawna, may you remind me on what we're looking at for replacement of an assistant?
Um, right now in the budget is, we have nine months of a replacement in there at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we vote on this?
Hmm, yes.
No.
No, I didn't think so.
No?
We have the motion.
Okay, we have motion and a second? Okay. On favor say aye.
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 Close, no. Motion carries. Sorry, I got you up a little too soon.
[laughing]
Okay. Item 6.2, Public Work Superintendent Offer of Employment. Go ahead, Shawna.
All right. Next, I would like the, I have the recommendation to appoint interim public work superintendent Jeff Hoffman to the position of public work superintendent effective November 4th, 2020. Jeff has been the interim public work superintendent since July 1st, 2020, and has been the assistant public work superintendent since April 20th, 2014. The further recommendation includes no additional probationary period, as he's been doing the job of interim public work superintendent since July 1st, 2020, and compensation at the fourth step rate.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the appointment of Jeff Hoffman to the position of public work superintendent effective November 4th, 2020.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? See none? On favor say aye.
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 Close, no. Motion carries.
Congratulations, Jeff.
Congratulations. Do you want to say something to him?
You should.
[laughing]
He doesn't have a tie on, though.
No, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to, to work for the city of New Ulm. I've been here since 2006 and really enjoy working here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Good luck. Yes.
All right. We'll go on to item 6.3, ordinance number 2020-039, fifth series, first consideration, schedule fees.
Counselors, there's just a few minor changes to the, to the fee schedule from the previous years. Nothing really earth shattering in there.
I can't hear you.
There are not a lot of big changes. It's just a lot of smaller changes to the fee schedule to this year from last year, so.
Um, but we still can have some dialogue about this.
Yes.
I just want to, I just have a few. I know that a lot of us at the council have been talking about daycare and concerns about daycare, and three years ago, we waived the daycare inspection fee for one year, and then we let it go back on again. And I'm thinking that maybe we need to do that again. I think we need to do everything we can to increase daycare on our community, and I'd like to see us waive that $50 inspection fee again this year. And I don't see Elwood here. Is he hiding back there anywhere? No, I don't know if he's behind that post.
Actually, I believe that would be the fire chief would do that.
Oh, so I was just.
He just walked out.
He just walked out.
I would just, my question was how much revenue was there, but I don't expect that it's that much anyway. But I just think that's one less obstacle for our daycare people to get over, and anything we can do to help in that area, I think, is important. So hopefully my fellow councilors will support me in that. The only other fees that I had some questions on was, and Tom's here. It looks like we didn't charge obviously anything for the amphitheater because we didn't have one, and now we're going to charge $110 for a resident with, a resident who wants to rent the amphitheater. So that will be the cost for an entire day, half a day. Is there, do we know what, where did that 110 come from? And that's kind of my question.
Tom Schmidt's Park and Recreation Department, President Schmidt, Councilor Schultz, members. That fee was a result of combining the pavilion and the amphitheater together, because when we have events down there, it kind of takes the whole park. So we added the pavilion, the big pavilion, to the amphitheater, put that together, and we have it available for half a day or a full day.
So the 110 is for a full day or a half a day?
That's for a full day.
For a full day, okay. And then was there any discussion by your Park and Rec group about, and has there been about, having a lower fee for nonprofits versus, you know, somebody's going to rent it for a wedding, which I'm assuming that'll be a very popular venue next year for weddings. And I'm fine with the rate for that, but I'm just wondering is, was there discussion with a lower rate for nonprofits that might use it for other stuff? Or should there be?
We have not discussed that. We've got a resident, a non-resident fee.
Right.
If there's a special request, we can entertain those. But no, we have not traditionally, I've been here 15 years, and we have not developed a for-profit versus nonprofit fee schedule.
Because I was going to kind of go to that same argument with our shelters up on Hyman Park, because it's just like, wow, whole day, $200 now, $211 for the whole day. And I was just like, whoa, for a nonprofit of 4-H Club or somebody like that, there's just no way they're going to afford that. So maybe it's worth at least discussing at your meeting at some point. I don't know.
Has that question ever come up, Tom?
No, it hasn't. Not in a significant manner. No.
The only other one that I saw a significant increase was the Johnson Football Field Game Night went from $640 to $717, or the non-resident went from $665 to $789. The rest all kind of laid in, but that one just kind of jumped out at me, too.
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
That had to do with evaluating the costs, you know, the material, the paint, the labor, the lights. the lights, the utilities, the new restrooms, all that sort of stuff.
And I figured it had to do maybe with the expansion and...
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was where, okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else that, anybody question?
Maybe touch and base with Les' scenario about nonprofits. That's all negotiable. They could present to the Park and Rec Commission at any time to, and then to bring a recommendation to a council. Is that correct?
Yes, they could, certainly. In any organization that wants to partner with Park and Rec or partner with the city, such as National Night Out, the Blood Mobile, things like that, you know, we're certainly, we have partnered in the past, we do partner now, and we will continue to consider public partnerships for public events.
Do we market that in some capacities or post that, that we are willing to partner?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So if we were to re-eliminate the daycare inspection fee for one year, we would need a motion on that tonight, Roger, right?
No, I mean, this is just the first consideration.
Just the first read.
When you have the second consideration, that's when any amendments would kick in.
We would do it then.
And on the question of the nonprofits, I believe that legally we can establish rates for residents and non-residents. To have a rate that would apply to nonprofits versus everyone else, that's something frankly I should probably research. I don't know that we can do that.
Okay.
I mean, I think we can always negotiate. If there are grounds, it's ultimately up to Park and Rec, but to have a flat provision that a nonprofit gets a different rate than anybody else, it's very possible we can do it, but I should look into that.
All right. Yeah, I know, as I was reading it, I'm like, wow, there's no way some Boy Scout group is gonna be able to afford that kind of a fee for an event, but, so, all right, thank you.
Thanks. Any more questions?
Motion to waive the first reading of the ordinance number 2020-039, fifth series, amending section 2.99 of the city code of the city of New Ulm relative to schedule of fees.
Counselor, we really don't even need to do that.
We don't need to do that?
It's just the first consideration.
Okay, so we just, all right, go on. Item 6.4, preliminary official statement for the goal sales tax revenue bond series 2020B. Nicole?
Counselors, this is just, it's the offering statement that will be presented to any possible bidders next Tuesday, when, or, on the 17th, when the sale occurs. And then that final sale results will come to you at the meeting on November 17th.
Thank you. Any questions for Nicole? See none? Entertained a motion to receive and approve it, draft?
I'm gonna offer a motion to receive and approve the draft of the preliminary offering statement regarding the amount of $7,745,000 general obligation sales tax revenue series 2020B.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's no, motion carries. Item 6.5, use of the CARES Act funds.
Counselors, before you are in the action item, I gave you some approximate splits for the final CARES fund. About 60% of it, we have going towards payroll, 29% towards technology, 11% to miscellaneous expenses, and then less than 1% for some other general supplies for cleaning. This should not change very much from our final report, so we're just looking for your approval for what we've got here before we submit those final numbers to the state. We have, actually have more funds available as well, so we have overspent, or, I shouldn't say overspent, we have other funds that could have applied if there was more funding.
If we needed, yeah. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? I looked through it, everything looked fine to me, and I think it met what we wanted, so...
Yeah, I looked at it as well. I thought the breakout was really done well, so I approve it as well.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
All right, entertained a motion, offer a resolution.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading approving the act, the use of $1,028,018 CARES Act funds distributed to the city of New Ulm by the state of Minnesota.
Second. We have a motion and a second to offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Nikola County State Highway Number 37, snow removal agreement here.
Thank you, Mr. President, city councilors. This is a yearly agreement that the city conducts with Nikola County to remove the snow on CASA 37, so it'd be from the Minnesota River Bridge out to Highway 14. The rate stayed the same per month this year at $520. After checking with the public works superintendent, he felt that was adequate for the months of December, January, February, and March.
And we've been doing this for many years.
Many years, yes.
I'm gonna go ahead and approve the Nikola County Highway 37 snow removal agreement dated the November 24th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's no, motion carries. Item 6.7, engineering services for anchor designs and potential downtown poles. Chris?
Counselors, what you have before you today is a request from the Downtown Garland Committee to use the decorating funds that we had set aside for engineering services. The anchor points on the buildings in downtown are no longer able to sustain the garland, so the Garland Committee was tasked with looking at other options or potential options to continue the garland tradition. To move forward with this, we need to have an engineer draw up new anchor points for poles. Poles are gonna be the, kind of the only option moving forward if we want to continue the garland tradition. Bolton and Mink has put forward a proposal ranging from $32,500 and an amount not to exceed $40,500. The service would include drawing the anchor points for the 22 poles. That doesn't mean there's gonna be 22 different drawings or will be a range, because some of the poles will have the exact same anchor points. This would give us 11 strands of garland going from 4th North to 1st South. We need to do, the other reason to do this engineering is we won't be able to get an accurate quote for the poles without having them engineer what the poles are, the weight load, wind load, and snow load for those poles. Just for a point of reference, I had presented on this before, a potential calculated cost for the poles, this was based on the 2013 project, would roughly be $464,343 to get 22 poles. The price per pole in 2013 was $15,000. I did a 5% increase per year, bringing that total up to $21,106.50 for a price in 2020. We would need 22 poles to complete the project as designed. That would be poles at every intersection from 4th North to 1st South. And then speaking with Bolton and Mink, they had given a range of roughly $350,000 to $500,000 for doing the poles, so it fits in line. So some things that need to be considered, this would just be for engineering services only, and this will tell us where poles are viable. There are steam tunnels and utilities running through the downtown, so they'd be able to locate that and see if putting poles through the downtown is even feasible at this point as well. This is, again, just cost for engineering services, and then after we get the engineering services, will we be able to get an accurate quote for the poles? And there is no money allocated in next year budget for the poles at this point in time. So I leave that up. Todd from, or Owen from Bolton and Mink is here, if you have any questions. And then we have two members from the Garland Committee as well, if you have any questions for them.
Chris, was there any discussion about putting poles in the middle of the blocks or a reason for not doing that or just doing the corners?
Just doing the corners, because you're adding, again, more poles, and adding more poles would just cost more money. So I figure each of the intersections, you can see from Broadway, looking down, you'd be able to see, because then we'd string garland across the numbered streets as well.
Was that...
We've had five strings for what, four or five years now, and we would be going back to about 11 strings once this project is complete, if we decide to go forward with this.
Was that the consensus of the committee, to just do the corners?
Yeah, pretty much, yep.
Okay.
Yep, it's where they're most visible.
Yeah, a comment I want to make, thank the committee members for it, that is a lot of money.
It is an incredible amount.
I'm gonna give my opinion. I announced it, I was the Grinch at the last time with the garland. Just for us to spend the $45,000, knowing we're headed the direction of spending $350 to a half a million dollars for garland that are used five to six weeks a year, I'm up front, I won't support it.
Well, let's just talk a little bit about that. So you have a little bit more information that was talked about at the meeting. First of all, the bid is up to $45,000, that's if they run into issues and problems. So on the low end, it's quite a bit less than that. Some of the talk at the committee was fundraising potential, could it go half and half? So there was some big talk about that. There's talk about it wouldn't just be the five weeks, six weeks of Christmas, that those banners could go around all year round and advertise things going on in our cities. There could be some potential fundraising, not fundraising, but if different agencies would rent, want to rent those spaces for banners, advertising our, all of our downtown events or things going on at German Park or our other communities. So there was a lot of talk like that, that I think could help drive this cost down. It's $500,000 a lot of money, you bet. It's a crazy amount of money, but it's a one-time cost, and once those poles are in, they're gonna be in for 50, 60, 70 years. And this is a tradition that our community has had for since the, oh boy, now where's Denny Ward when you need him? 60s? 1922 or something. It goes way back to the 1920s. So it's something that people want, and they want it, see it come back, and I think it's gonna be pretty sad this year that we don't have them. So I hope that is some additional information that might make you at least reconsider to a little bit.
The people that I talked to with these low-ball numbers, 32 to 45, whatnot, they were just like, what? You're gonna spend that kind of money to study it first? Well, you already know it's gonna be between $350 and $500. Yes, I understand the fundraising part.
Well, and they don't have to all be done in one year either. So there's always options of rolling it in over three years or two years. So there's certainly options like that for it to consider. We don't know where our finances are gonna be either, but I don't think we know the answer till we get our engineers in there to snoop around. And you want to talk a little bit about what your study's gonna look like and what you're gonna be able to tell the city councilors, once you do your work?
Owen, Todd with Bolton and Mink, 43 Circuit Drive, President Schmitz, Counselor Schultz. The proposal we have before you is, again, to look at 22 different poles, and from our standpoint, it's more so the bases than the poles. It's what's underground that's really gonna drive the engineering study, and then trying to determine what the wind load is gonna be and the tensile load of that cable going across from pole to pole. There are 22 different locations, like I said, of which 15 of them have some impact on the steam system. 12 of them, as near as we can tell, are either directly adjacent to or on an existing steam tunnel. Three of them are near a buried steam line, not one in a tunnel, the three that are direct buried. And then there's seven that we don't know what's there. It might be clean, it might be clear, there might be fiber optic, there might be gas lines, there might be other utilities. So the first part of the proposal is to study those 22 locations, and you all have the map in your packet that shows the locations? And that's about the scale that we looked at it. I've visited the site with the city manager, and we picked locations. Those aren't down to the nearest inch. We're gonna have to go through and determine the exact location of that, and then where they do land on the steam utilities and other utilities. Determine that exact location, and then figure out how it does tie into the steam tunnel. Is it on the roof? Is it on the side? Is it in a portion where the sidewalk is the roof of the steam tunnel? Or are there other places where it's on, like the cattle pass portion where there's sidewalk and then gravel, and then the cattle pass steam tunnel? So we'll look at all those situations in all 22 locations, and then come up, working with the pole supplier, come up with a design for those 22 locations. And we would look at all 22 locations at once, as part of this proposal. And then you could phase them in, you know, a couple of year, all at once, split it in halves, split it in thirds, whatever the case may be.
I'm gonna just say it's a lot of money, but I think you have to have a plan. If you don't have a plan, you don't, you can't move forward. And if we've got a group that's willing to do some fundraising and look at those opportunities, you know, I'm okay with it.
Am I missing anything from the committee members? Heather, anything, or Kathleen, anything you want to add? Go ahead, yeah.
So I'm Heather Hammer, I'm on the Downtown Garland Committee. Just a reminder, we did have, in many of the stores last year, we had thousands of people write their name down and petition that they do want to keep this, and they want to see something happen. And without the study, we can't do anything. So we know it's a lot of money, this isn't the direction we would want, but I think it's the best for the city and the citizens, and those are the people that are voting the councilors into their position. So may have a few naysayers, but you have a lot more yaysayers than you do naysayers. And this is something that is unique to New Ulm and brings people here, keeps your businesses alive that are bringing in tax dollars and so on, and employing people. So, you know, I just want you to stay a little bit more open-minded, if you can. I know it's a lot of money, especially right now, but with the study, I think we can have a good plan in place to see which way we need to go.
And I think, too, that we look at how well the New Ulm residents came together to help build the amphitheater, and how they came together in other types of large projects like this, when it's something that they really want. And I think you're right, when we, if we lose the greenery downtown at Christmas time, it just takes away one less thing that we're not, makes New Ulm a little bit special, and then we just become a plain old town. So I agree with you, and I, I just think that we can all come together as citizens and figure out a way to make this happen, so.
You know, a comment, and I understand where it's coming from, I mean, the budget's tight. This year, our budget, we slammed stuff we did not want to, building maintenance, there's items like that, fire department funds, there's nothing in the budget next year. We're all aware next year is gonna be our, probably our toughest year with the budget, so we're gonna slam in $100,000 to buy a couple of poles and cut what? I just have a hard time supporting it. It's a lot of money.
I guess where I'm coming from is I, I'm supporting Dave's idea. For one thing, we budgeted $50,000. The $50,000, when we budgeted, wasn't to my understanding to come up, who, guy told us, to come up with, doing a study with that money, I thought it was to be used to come up with a design or some plan downtown for this Christmas coming up, so we could buy stuff, whatever it might happen to be. Now we're gonna take that, part of that $50,000, I don't know what we're gonna use for Christmas downtown now, but if we didn't need the $50,000, I still don't go along with spending $32,000 to $45,000 to do a study, because if we do the study, we're committing that we're ready to go, eventually, otherwise, to spend that $300,000 to $500,000. I will not support spending that kind of money on poles. Whether tradition or not, I'm sorry, it's, we cannot throw that kind of a tax burden on our residents. It's just not fair. And if they want, if, I would support, if they want to go out and do a fundraiser, do the fundraiser first, come back to the city council, once you've got 50% of the funds raised or whatever, and then let's do a study. But if we do this study now, and we don't get the funds raised for the next 10 years or whatever it might be, by then, we might change our whole mind of what we really want to do, you know? I thought the committee was gonna actually go down and come up with different options to us. We don't have an option here. We got one option, we don't have an option two, three, four. So I'm not happy with the study at all, I'll be honest. I don't think it was done the way I thought it was gonna be done, so I really will not support it.
There is some funds that we haven't really talked about, what we are gonna do downtown.
Yes. So downtown, right now, we're spending about a little under $5,000, and what we're doing is we're putting double-sided wreaths with red bows on 78 of the lights, light poles downtown, so it'll go from, again, 4th North to 1st South. Basically, every pole that has a light will have live garland wreaths on them for downtown, or for Christmas decorations this year. And then the Chamber is still doing the Christmas trees on the corners that they do every year, so those will still be, still be there.
And I don't think that...
I think there's something that we could come up with that would replace the garden. And it's a hell of a cost.
And I don't think the committee expects the city to pay for all of it. I think that they're willing, and we understand that there'll have to be some fundraising done.
But then we should do the fundraising first, where I'm coming from.
But we don't know how much money we need to fundraise, so without the study...
I don't think you're gonna come up with a half a million dollars right away.
I don't either.
So, I mean, if we can come up with, do a fundraising, get $250,000, then come back to the city and then do the study.
And then, the city says no, and then what do we do with the $250,000 that we fundraised?
Well, just have it pledged.
For that purpose.
That's what we did for the amphitheater, too. The money was pledged. They didn't, someone wrote out checks, but...
Well, this is the committee that was put in place to figure out what we should do, and that's what the, this is what the committee's come up with.
And we had a lot of discussions about this topic.
We have had a lot of discussions, and we didn't wanna spend the money on some plastic decorations that we may never use again, because, you know, we, our goal is to get back to the garland.
Kathleen, anything you wanna add? Were we missing anything else? Okay.
I disagree with Dave. I will not support it.
Oh, a lot of money. I mean, I, you know, I'm researching myself. Everybody's saying that the garland, garland were not the first Christmas decorations in New Ulm. Elroy Ubel has a collection of the early 1900s, the Christmas trees lining Minnesota Street, lit up. It went up and down Broadway when I was a kid. Everything was lit up with bulbs. It's like, we're stuck on, I'm not even gonna call it tradition. We're stuck on the garland. There were other ways they decorated downtown in the early 1900s, and these numbers, and if you give me a list of 2,000 people that want me to raise their taxes to fund this, then I'll probably vote for it. I just don't think they're going to.
And I don't know if I agree with you in the fact that the study commits us to go forward. The study commits us to figure out what are the real costs gonna be.
But if we don't go forward, we're just, excuse my English, pissing the money away. That's $45,000.
$45,000. We already have the rough projection.
$45,000. We could do a lot with something different.
From reputable business, Bolton and Mink, $350,000 to $500,000.
We went through this back in 2013, where they got the numbers, and we talked about it, and the price is there. We know it's going to be there.
Otherwise, table it for a few months so you get a new council.
You old Grinches? Yeah, there's something to that. We probably will have a couple different councilors, and maybe we need to figure out where they're gonna be on this particular issue.
I guess I'd like to ask the question, how long would the study like this take to perform?
From the engineering standpoint?
Yeah.
And our proposal just called it a timeframe that would, that would work for the city. I'm thinking it's in the three to four months, you know, to get people down there. I do know that we've had the conversation, in the current situation, some deliveries are strange. Poles would be a nine to 11-month lead time.
Yeah.
You know, so, I think if you said yes tonight, it's not gonna happen in 2021.
So, we're, we'd be looking at in 2022 realistically?
Realistically, yeah. I don't wanna squash hopes, but that's...
You could say an 18 to 20-month lead time, the time you get started with this project to take it from start to finish.
We did have a discussion about the potential of rolling this in over a couple, two years, maybe three years, so it's not, you know, one big, large ticket item in one fiscal year that we can't afford, so.
Chris, could you shed some light? How much do we current, how much have we in the past spent on garland per year to try to put them up and down? Five grand, 10 grand?
No, so usually, it's the PUC spends about $2,000 a year for the garland, and then they just donate their, their time to put it up and down.
Okay.
And the PUC pays for the garland?
Yes, the PUC does, yeah. So, you know, I will say, the one caveat with doing a phased plan, instead of doing it all in one, all at once, is increased cost and mobilization. So, if you phase it in, you might be paying extra for the next year to get the poles and materials, and you still have to take into account the lead time as well to kinda phase, phase that through.
I guess I'll make a comment, too. I know you made the comment, you got a petition. Do another petition and put some dollar values behind it that they're willing to pay and see how many sign. I don't believe it's gonna happen. I don't think the people out there, the residents, are gonna go along with having their taxes go up a couple hundred dollars a year, and that's what it's gonna amount to. We're talking, to get this kinda revenue, $500,000, we're talking about raising the tax levy by at least 8%.
Yeah, but Charlie, you can't say that because...
Yeah, we are.
But you're not gonna, you know, with fundraising, it's not 500,000. That's the maximum that it could be.
But we're gonna have to carry it till the funds are there. We've done it in the past.
Right.
It isn't there.
But it could be $350,000, which is a lot different. And then, if you had some fundraising on top of that, it drops it down to, now you're down to $175,000. And if you break that out over two or three years, it brings it down to more of a manageable level. You can't just look at it as one expense. And then, we have to remember that it's one expense, and then it's, we don't need to touch those poles forever, and we got a beautiful city with our Christmas garland and tradition back for the next couple generations, so. I seriously think that we need to take a look at it, but I think tonight, we're probably have a tie vote, so I don't know if we should just offer a motion to table it at this point, cuz I don't think it's gonna go further anyway.
I don't think it's gonna go any further tonight either. It sounds like two and two right now, but have we discussed with the EDA at all, with some dollars possibly?
This is not an economic, this isn't an economic development project. This would be a community development project, so I don't think the EDA would look at putting money in for poles.
Okay.
And one other thing I noticed on here, too, Chris, we were also told by the state fire marshal, we can't hang garland from the buildings, correct?
Yes. So, because it is, again, the actual, why am I blinking? The actual bells and stars aren't UL listed. They potentially, or actually, they have caused a fire before. They're not safe to hang on, on the buildings, and so the liability, you know, who's in charge of the liability at that point? And we had a rough time getting the easement signed last year, and right now, there's only three lines up at this point in time.
So, I guess in order to move us forward, I'm gonna offer a motion to table this item for further discussion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? See you none? On favor say aye.
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 Pos no? Motion carries. Item 6.8, Request by QuickTrip to Terminate Agreement for the Easement Agreement. Let me see, do we have somebody that wants to speak on that?
Dave left.
Dave disappeared on us.
I had help of order.
There you go.
Okay. QuickTrip is the owner of this particular parcel of property, as well as the property around it. There was a building constructed there in 1960, and it has since been demolished. In 1983, the city entered into an agreement with the property owners, and that agreement allowed the property owners to install a curb cut, as well as allow customer parking in front of the building, which would've been on the 16th North Street right of way. With the removal of the building, there's no longer a need for this agreement. The city attorney has reviewed the agreement and found it acceptable. The agreement would be signed by the city. It would be the city manager and finance director. And I would note that the new document requires QuickTrip to install sidewalk and curb and gutter in this particular area to our specifications.
I'll offer resolution, waive the reading, approving the request to QuickTrip to terminate an agreement and easement agreement on the property at 618, 16 North.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to offer resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See you none? Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Matt?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schmitt?
Yes, motion carries. Item 6.9, Plata the Portion of the Airport Industrial Park Expansion Area.
Okay. Back in 2017, the city purchased approximately 45 acres of property north of Walmart, and that was intended to serve as an area where our industrial park could be continued. We have been working with the firm from Dayton, Ohio, and they have expressed an interest in acquiring seven acres of land. We showed them a variety of different sites in New Ulm. Matter of, they were in New Ulm unbeknownst to us, and also looked at some properties. And they have expressed interest in acquiring this particular piece of property that is, that the city currently owns. The exact size of the property that they would acquire will be determined shortly, but before we can even enter into a purchase agreement with them for the property, we need a legal description, and the legal description would have to be acquired through the plating of the property. And so, what we would propose to do is to plat the southeast corner of this particular parcel that the city owns. We would connect Jacobs with Somsen Street, and then we would end up plating three lots. They would be interested in the parcel of property directly behind Walmart, so that would be to the west of Jacob Street.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions? Questions for Dave?
I'm gonna go ahead and offer a motion to authorize Bolton and Mink to prepare a plot of the portion of the airport industrial park expansion area at a cost of $3,900.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? See you none? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pos no? Motion carries. Item 7.1, Reported Claims Paid, Accepted List of Claims Paid in Amount of $8,636,479.55.
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on any? See you none? On favor say aye.
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 Pos no? Motion carries. This time, we're going to, we have an addendum, so...
I'll offer a motion to suspend the rules to take up the addendum.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Pos no? Motion carries. Consent to Assignment of the Emerson Union TIF Loan, or TIF Note.
Yep. Mr. President, councilors, this kinda came together last Friday, so I apologize to staff for getting it on, and the council, getting it on the agenda so late. I was contacted by the attorney who is working with the developer and owner of the New Emerson Union Apartments, and so they had a construction loan to do all the work, and they wanna convert that into their permanent financing. The construction loan was through Wells Fargo, and Wells Fargo required that the city consent to the assignment of the TIF note, which is the benefit that they'll be getting over the course of time through the TIF district for the property. That mortgage, that construction loan will get paid off. They're converting now into their permanent financing, and the new lender is asking for the same treatment. So, it really does not affect or prejudice our rights or our obligations, and they just need to have the city authorize, city manager and finance director to sign the consent form, so they can go ahead and close. They're looking at doing this probably within the next week or so. And I've reviewed both the documents. I have no objections to them.
Thank you, Ed.
With that, I'll offer a resolution, waive the reading, authorizing the city manager and finance director to sign a consent to the assignment of the TIF note provided as part of the financing for the Emerson Union Apartment Projects.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to offer resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See you none? Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Matt?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Item 8.1, Adjourn to the Canvas of 2020 General Election Results, and that's for Friday, November 13, 2020, at 12:00 PM here at the council chambers.
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Pos no? Motion carries. No more business. Meeting adjourned.